Thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I remind you just to stay close to the microphone because the way it records is that it works right from the mic, not from the sound out in front of you.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. I'll, not as an eloquent speaker as the Chairman of the Board of the School System and the Superintendent, so I have prepared some written remarks just so that I can make sure that I cover as many things as I feel like is necessary. So forgive me if I find myself reading at times in order to share with you some information today. Madam Chairwoman Murphy and members of the Board, my name is Maurice Royster and I am employed by EQT Corporation. And I have with me today Rob Shin, and he is also here representing Mountain Valley Pipeline. We really do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to follow up with you all regarding the project. As you may recall from earlier communications, Mountain Valley Pipeline is currently in the process of evaluating alternative routes that could potentially affect Craig County. So what I hope to do this evening is to give you a perspective of where we are in the process of evaluating these alternatives and also to give you some brief overview of the project. Mountain Valley Pipeline Project is a joint venture mainly between two companies, and that is EQT Corporation and Nextera Energy Company. EQT is a leading natural gas production company and a pipeline transmission company that's located in the Appalachian Basin. We operate in six states, including Virginia. And Nextera is a diversified energy company with operations in 26 states. In addition to being a very large consumer of natural gas, they are the largest generator of electricity from renewables, from wind and solar, in North America. The total length of the natural gas pipeline is approximately 300 miles, and it will run from northern West Virginia in Wetzel County all the way down and then can interconnect with Transco just below Chatham, Virginia. The planned service date would be in December of 2018 when we anticipate that the pipeline would go into service, which is almost four years from now. The total project cost is $3.5 billion. One of the questions that we routinely get asked is, well, why do we need the pipeline? What's the purpose of such a project and why do we need this? Our answer to that, and when I talk to folks, I share with them that there is a huge demand that is growing in the southeast as well as in the northeast. Everything from residential heating, commercial heating, manufacturing, and electric generation. And in past years, it used to be that natural gas produced in the Gulf region could supply all of the southeast and also the northeast and would go, would travel up the Transco line up into the New England states. But growing population that's occurring, that's not the case anymore. And thankfully, as a result of probably 10 years ago, one of the most massive energy discoveries recently in the United States in the Marcellus Shale, the Utica Shale deposits in Pennsylvania and West Virginia and Ohio, has made it possible for us to meet that growing need and the additional natural gas that is needed in the southeast communities as well as through the areas where the pipeline will traverse. So where are we in the process? We are still in the very early stages of identifying this route and in the route selection process. The route is actually a, is a two-year process, and we're about five months into that process. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, also known as FERC, has primary jurisdiction over the approval process, and their main requirement is to ensure that the pipeline is constructed in such a way that in an area that it will have the least amount of environmental impact and cultural impact. So in order to make sure that we are complying with one of FERC's requirements, we have spent the last several months meeting with thousands of stakeholders and communities along the proposed route to hear their concerns and consider feedback that we consider extremely crucial to the whole process. So to date, we have currently conducted numerous open houses, five of which have been in Virginia. And we are in the process and just confirmed with Mr. Willmore that we'll be holding an open house in Craig County, probably the week of the 7th, 8th, 9th. We're shooting for the 9th. Mountain Valley Pipeline is committed to identifying a proposed route that does have the least amount of impact on landowners and the environmental and cultural resources. We're present, as I said, we're presently, in the project, we're currently evaluating several possible routes, and some of those routes include Craig County. And we've begun that process of contacting landowners via mail and then also with, with a follow-up personal call just to be able to access the property to be able to start the evaluation process. FERC requires that the review of these alternatives include an evaluation of the topography, an evaluation of environmental, historical, and cultural issues. So obviously, until that process can take place, it's, we're unable to determine, determine the route. I know this is, this is very sensitive for Craig County as it is for, for many counties, and, believe me, the, the company does, does get that. And we, we want to engage in communication with you so that we can evaluate, is Craig County a place where one of these alternative routes will, will take place? As we talk to landowners and other folks, the three questions that we always get is one about safety, one about local usage, and what's in it for the county. As far as safety, the Natural Transportation Safety Board and U.S. Department of Transportation have reported that natural gas pipelines are the safest form of energy transportation in the United States. Currently, there is over 300,000 miles of FERC-regulated pipelines in place in the United States, operating safely. Plus, I can assure you that, that our companies, especially EQT that I've seen over my tenure with the company, take safety very seriously, and it is a core value. And we take tremendous precautions to ensure long-term safety and the integrity of our pipelines. Once the pipeline is operational, we use sophisticated technologies, including remote control shut-off valves to monitor the pipeline 24/7. Excuse me, I'm getting a little dry. The, there's actually physical external inspections as well as internal inspections that are routinely performed to check corrosion and any, any defects that, that they may find. And so that's constantly monitored. As far as the local usage question, the important thing to note here is the Mountain Valley Pipeline is an open access line. So every community that the pipeline traverses does have access to the line. There is obviously a process that has to be followed with the local distribution company must initiate the hookup and do the evaluation. But I think it's important to note that we've already received several inquiries from, from groups along the pipeline route that have shown an interest in accessing that natural gas. And as I said, what's in it for, for my county, what's in it for Craig County? One certain thing is the ad verum tax benefit to the county, and recently, there was an evaluation of Craig County and the alternatives that are potentially proposed. And the, the ad verum, the property tax that was figured was in the number of around $900,000 a year that would be as a result of the pipeline being in place in, in Craig County. I know that Craig County is very unique and is, and is a very special place, and, and, you know, the tax dollars may be important and they may not be, but that would be a benefit to the county. So not to infringe upon your all's time, let me, let me stop there and Rob and I can answer any questions that you all have. In closing, just let me say again that this is the early stages of the pipeline route selection. So until the, we get through the process of evaluating all the things that we just talked about, we don't know if Craig County will be affected or if it will be affected by one of the alternative routes. So Madam Chairman and members of the Board, thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to be here and present Mountain Valley Pipeline to you, and we would be happy to take, take any questions that you might have.
I got one question. Is this a guaranteed $900,000 a year from now on, or is it just a one-time deal?
Well, the property tax, I mean, it's like the property tax that I pay on my home. I mean, that's, that's an annual, that's an annual tax that would be applied based on the asset of the pipeline.
You don't figure out depreciation?
That's, that's a question way beyond my pay grade, so, but, you know, I don't know about you, but my taxes always seem to go up. They don't, they don't come down, so.
Okay.
Hey Maurice?
Yes.
I can help answer the Councilmember's question. I did speak with the, the person who does the property tax valuation with the Virginia Department of Tax, and there is an element that does depreciate, but there's also a part of it that stays more constant based on the revenues. If you would like, I can give you that person's contact information so you can get a better sense of, of the, because it's very important, but as a short answer, it will stay fairly constant for a while, but then depreciate some over time, I think is what they told me, but we can give you their contact information so you can have somebody follow up directly.
Thank you.
This tax base, the majority of this pipeline is proposed as going through a national force. This tax base that you're talking about, $900,000 a year, is that based off personal or federal? It's, because we get nothing from federal, and the personal property owners would be the only tax base that we would see to the county.
Yeah, it's, again, that would be a, a good question for the Virginia State Department of Taxation, because I understand it with a lot of public utilities and public service corporations, they are assessed with a different taxation structure than personal property tax. But I know the gentleman who did the study for us was aware that there is a very large percentage of federal forestry land in the county and took that into consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thank you. I have a question on, on the route, the alternative route, and the way that the letters, the communication from your company came to our citizens. It's been a rough winter all the way around for an awful lot of people in the whole region. But when letters showed up in people's mailboxes in February during these storms, before any public hearings were, were able to be scheduled to hear any public comment, that was very unsettling for the citizens of our county. And the packets that just sent out, in my opinion, if you're being sincere, they would have all the information that a landowner would need to navigate the process and be in. I know you did share with us, the first time you came to meet with us as individual board members, an idea of where this pipeline might be coming in our county in an effort for us to be able to work with our landowners. The original line turned out not to be where this proposed alternative 110, 110J, 110R are going to be. That was published in the newspaper, the wrong area, was published in the newspaper. And then when these packets came out, I happened to be on the route myself personally, so I got a packet. And reading the information there, and as I'm seeing the packet you just gave us today, it's the same information sheet. It lists where the, the counties where the pipeline is proposed to go, where your studies are being authorized, where your contacts are being, you're asking us to receive information about a potential pipeline, and Craig County is not on the list.
Right.
It's not given to our citizens, and it's not given to us today in the packets that you're giving us. Can you explain how, how you can proceed at this stage and follow FERC's timelines and dates that you're required to, to meet, but yet we, our citizens haven't even begun to have a conversation about what's in the county and what you're proposing a pipeline to run through? If you could just share with us the...
Sure, I, I will try to do that. The, again, you know, to go back, we are in the early stages, and there is Craig County information that is, that is now available and posted on the website, and I actually thought that that was in the packet.
You're probably referring to the, the map of the, the new alternative route.
Right, there, there should be the three alternative routes that, that are in the, in the packet.
Maybe you could share with us when they were proposed and when, at what point did Craig get on your map? You know, were those proposed?
The, the exact date, I'm not sure, but the, the same day is, is when I, I called Mr. Goodman and shared with him. When I received the information, I, I shared it with you all. I know that initially, you know, when, when you and I were first talking, we, we kind of had an area that we knew we were looking at, and they were looking at it from a desktop perspective and not having all of the records and so forth that the land agents had, had gone, hadn't evaluated. So it was kind of a, a process that hadn't evolved to that point. So yes, Craig County was not considered initially, hence the reason why you're not seeing a lot of the initial information include Craig County. So it became, Craig County became, you know, part of this only as a result of alternative routes that, that are being analyzed. And does that help explain that?
Yeah, and one last follow-up on that issue. I know that the FERC responses to your pre-filing process, it's, it's a very complicated process. You have to show them lots of information that you've found and you've shared before they'll grant you, you know, permission to put in a pipeline. But this proposed route, who, who comes up with it and at what point? In other words, no one came out here to physically survey the information. Is it something that was just drawn on a map? Were aerial maps, GIS maps used?
Right, it's, it's initially evaluated, you know, from the topos and until, you know, folks can really analyze the, the alternative routes. I mean, to look at it from environmental aspect, from cultural topography, they don't really know if that alternative route is a possibility. So that's why we're at that stage at this point. I mean, we're not, you know, we're not even at the stage of, of surveying or analyzing those particular areas. We're still at the point of trying to, to negotiate outreach to the landowners to be able to access the property in order to, to start the next phase, which is that evaluation. Does that, does that make sense?
And that evaluation, is that part of the pre-filing process as well?
It, it is.
Or does that happen after?
It, it, it will take, as, take part as a part of the pre-filing, yes.
Pre-filing.
Yeah. You have anything to add?
Yeah, and just, just to add to what Mr. Royster just said, is in the other counties where the pipeline has been proposed, we sat down and had very good discussions with, with a lot of the county leadership and have changed the route even in very modest ways, and that goes as well with conversations with landowners. And that's why the survey access is very important, because it allows the landowners to tell us, well, I don't currently have a barn in this part of my property, but I'd like to have one in the future. It's that two-way information sharing that's very important, because that allows us to, to change the line based on that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If you currently are filing your certificate with FERC, would be what, in October for your proposed route?
I believe that was the initial proposal, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's what the target is, although it could slip.
That's what I got off your website.
Yes.
My question is, is why so late in the game has Craig County pulled into this? You know, all the other counties and all the other proposed routes and all the other corridors that already are existing, why Craig County?
Right, and again, with Craig County, we didn't know until we started looking at alternatives that Craig County would be a part of those alternatives. So the initial route that is still the route that you see on the website did not, you know, did not traverse through Craig County. And then it was only until we started looking at the, the potential of alternatives, and then it was at that point that Craig, Craig County was being considered.
Why did they consider Craig County? That, that's my question. Why did they consider Craig County?
There, from my understanding, there are several different areas that they're looking at. One is the, the Appalachian Trail crossing, other sensitive environmental areas. Part of it has to do with, with National Park, from what I understand.
But these proposed routes would actually bring this pipeline right up against the Appalachian Trail.
Right.
And there are several areas of endangered species like the James Spiny Muscle and the bald eagle that currently are endangered, with it's been on a federal recovery plan for the last 30 years that these routes go right through.
Right, and, and that is a part of the evaluation process that will take place on the alternative that they're being considered.
Yeah, and I, I think one additional comment is, you know, this is really the third really major change in the route. The original route went through Floyd, much more to the south. Then the second iteration kind of was the one that's through Montgomery and Giles, and then this is another alternative we're looking at, and it, very likely, there'll be more changes.
Right.
And that's all part of the, like, there will be cultural resource and environmental scientists that go into the field to survey and get, get all that information, and things like endangered species and just impact on residents and the environment are all major things that are taken into consideration.
Before, and this is all to happen before October, is that correct?
Well, I, I think the October is, is, is a date that's out there that may or may not ultimately, it'll, everything will depend on the, the surveying work, you know, when the final draft route will be established, so it could very easily slip from that depending on how all the, the activity goes up until then.
Yeah, I think one of the major concerns in, I mean, of course, when you have your public farm, I appreciate you guys being here tonight and answering these questions. You know, a lot of people here have farms and shallow wells, and, you know, we have a lot of diversity as far as environment goes, and that's what we depend on in our county. And I think the largest question is the concerns of destruction of their property, and, I mean, you've, you know, looking at the Selenese plant where it was converted over to natural gas from coal, there's a huge swath cut through the mountain. It's not very attractive, and these are all concerns for our county and our citizens and things that need to be addressed through us.
Absolutely.
But I appreciate you coming here and answering questions.
Just one, also the last question. My understanding is it's a 42-inch high-pressure pipeline?
Yes.
That's correct. And how many of these pipelines have you, as your LLC, have you, have you installed?
This is the first 42-inch that we've installed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll look forward to the public hearings that you're going to be coordinating for our citizens.
Yeah, don't hold me to it, but I think we're looking at 7th, 8th, and 9th April for the open house. At this point, we're anticipating that it will be scheduled at the hospital.
Okay. Thank you.
We look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll have Bill Bolt with the Preserve Craig Organization.
Thank you for allowing us to do a presentation and a briefing to the board. First, I'd like to introduce the co-chair of Preserve Craig, Sam Easterling, who's going, are we good?
Okay.
Get a little closer?
Yeah.
Okay.
As close as you can be. If you can be right on it, that's the best.
Okay, keep the mic. Sam Easterling is going to help me with this presentation and share some of the, the slides that we're going to present to you. First of all, I'd like to give a little background about Preserve Craig while they're setting up the slides. Actually, quite a few people here are, may remember and been active in Preserve Craig 25 years ago. If, I see a number of faces of people, including some of the people who found, signed the original articles of incorporation for the, for, for the Preserve Craig, and I really want to commend the community for maintaining Preserve Craig as an organization. Preserve Craig is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) whose purpose is to preserve and protect the resources here in the county. And it's, it's been in existence for 25 years. It's done a number of projects, one of which was working in relation to the 765 KV pipeline power line built in, attempted to be built in the 1990s, and we successfully opposed its construction on a number of grounds and were, did, it didn't, it didn't get built.
They cannot hear you in the background.
Oh. Let's, make sure that...
Is the microphone in front of you, Jesse, is working and better? A small one.
Small.
A small, little one.
The little one?
Yes. Is that better?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Preserve Craig, I've pretty much outlined to you, for more information on Preserve Craig, there is a brochure I'd like to pass out to, to the board that describes its, its purpose Preserve Craig is a nonprofit, as I said, and was formed in 1991 with the support of more than 80% of Craig County households to preserve and to protect our natural, historical, and cultural resources. Its stated purpose is, as a nonprofit, to preserve and protect and to conduct research and compile and publish, publish information concerning natural, historical, and cultural resources, and to conduct educational programs. Preserve Craig became active regarding the pipeline a little over three weeks ago and has held two public education sessions and listen, in which over 300 people have attended those meetings to discuss their concerns. It has also identified landowners and shared information with landowners and brought attorneys to the county to discuss landowner rights. A little over three weeks ago... A little over three weeks ago, one of the active members initiated a petition. Unfortunately, she's not here, but many of you may know Marge Luter, and she suggested that we circulate a petition. I'm going to ask the board to consider this petition quite seriously. It is over, I'm going to read it into the record, and it has been signed by 1,221 citizens in only a few weeks, over 1,000 of which were obtained in the first 10 days in preparation for the May 5 meeting. We've identified that 871 of those citizens are members, citizens of Craig County. Sam, if you can turn this into the chair, I'd appreciate it. We have the first half of the petition up on the slide, but I will read it. This petition is addressed through the Craig County Board of Supervisors. "We, the undersigned citizens, are opposed to the survey for and construction of the Mountain Valley Pipeline. It will provide no local energy access, and the reduction of property values will far exceed landowner compensation. The pipeline will provide no benefit to this region, and it will endanger health, the natural resources, the water quality, the cultural values, tourism, property values, and citizen safety. We ask that the Craig County Board of Supervisors and our government officials take all actions necessary to protect our land, our rights, and our welfare by opposing this or any other transmission pipeline through Craig County." I'm sorry, I didn't point out an individual on each board member that I had available. "The citizens of Craig stand united to protect and preserve our natural resources and our way of life." I'd like to turn the podium over to Sam Easterling to discuss the next portion of the presentation. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. As the slide indicates, we need your help. And I'm going to speak not to any of the technical details that we have issue with. That'll be for another evening. The citizens of Craig County have been disenfranchised by the actions of Mountain Valley Pipeline, and we've not been afforded due process. And that's really the focus of my comment. And we need your help to address these. So this is information from the filing that MVP made to the FERC entitled "The Request to Initiate NEPA Pre-Filing Process Back on 27 October." The first five or six items are really what I want to focus on. Those shaded in the bottom are yet to come. And maybe you see them a little bit better here. So, as I mentioned, the proposed route, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Royster and Mr. Shen, was part of that 27 October filing. The FERC issues a director's notice of pre-filing a week after that, basically getting that going from FERC's perspective. And the third-party contacts and informing remaining stakeholders was to take place on or about the 17th of November. Again, these dates, all those in black are directly from the Mountain Valley Pipeline submittal to the FERC, which the FERC approved. A filed draft of research, excuse me, Resource Report 1 and Summary of Alternatives was filed on 24 October. This piece in green was not part of the submittal, but is part of one of the requirements that the FERC has, they submitted, excuse me, the MVP has. They submitted a request to survey the national forest land to the National Forest Service, also on 24 November. Open houses were scheduled and held during December of '14 and January of '15. Those in our immediate Giles/McGumry area, I think, were completed by about mid-January. Again, in green, this was, National Forest Service provides an open comment period on the MVP survey request. That happened, that window was open 21 January to 13 February. The piece in red here is one of the next major steps, and it hadn't occurred yet, as I think was maybe mentioned, it was in the schedule, original schedule is being issued. This is NOI, is a Notice of Intent, and there'll be further definition with the environmental impact statement, but that's a FERC decision. And so in MVP's schedule, it's noted as that. They don't control that directly. And it was originally expected to be issued by the end of February. So, if we look at the schedule continuing, you know, prior to the scheduled or expected issuance of the NOI, the Notice of Intent to Proceed with an Environmental Impact Study, which is a very critical step, it's all about a timeline. And this is the next sort of critical piece in this timeline. Those on the proposed route, again, the definition's specific, the proposed route is the Monroe County, Giles County, Montgomery, and so on. Those on that route and their local government entities had four months, mainly from late October to late February with the scheduled release of the NOI. To become aware of pipeline route, to be contacted by MVP and their survey subcontractors, to attend scheduled open houses, to educate themselves in general and review subsequent MVP reports, such as the one issued on the 1st of December, all with additional information. They could meet with government officials, they could provide input to FERC, they could provide input to the National Forest Service through the open comment period. They could indeed have direct conversations with folks from the Mountain Valley Pipeline Company. So, I seem like I missed a slide here. I clicked too fast. Sorry. We're good. Okay. So what about the citizens and local government in Craig County? Well, as you may be aware, MVP filed a summary of alternatives, February 2015 update. That was filed with the FERC on 18 February 2015. Open houses to provide input to those on the alternate route, that is now the, and let me be clear now, the alternate routes referring to 110, 110R, 110J. None have been scheduled, although it was great to hear both, actually, in the last day or so, as well as tonight from Mr. Royster, that they're targeting those for the 7th, one of the 7th to the 9th of April. Preserve Craig mobilized, as Bill mentioned, and wrote to the National Forest Service requesting that the public comment opportunity be reopened, given the new route. And that letter went to the Forest Service on the 4th of March. The National Forest Service indeed reopened the public comment period, and it's available from the 13th of March to the 2nd of April. And further, we received information indirectly, or if not directly, from the FERC that the NOI would not be issued in March. Remember, the initial schedule anticipated, maybe that was February. Wouldn't be issued in March. For the sake of our remaining dates, I'm assuming that might happen in mid-April. Obviously, it could be anytime. We don't know when, it's up to the FERC. So let's compare this schedule for just a minute, and this event, and the proposed route, and then the alternate 110 routes. So from the time of initial notification, back in October of '27, October 27th for the proposed route, for instance, to the NOI, assuming the NOI, as I said, is issued in mid-April, that'll be a five-and-a-half-month period. For the alternate 110 route, it'll be two months. Open house, holding of open house to closing of the National Forest Service comment period. Again, that's important because there's lots of information that the Mountain Valley Pipeline folks provide during these open houses, presumably. So that the length of time from the last open house in our region, mid-January, to the closing of the National Forest Comment Period was two-and-a-half months. Indeed, if the schedule holds, that we get an open house scheduled on the 7th, 8th, or 9th, the National Forest Service Comment Period will have closed the previous week. So the one in red is a minus one week. Again, information that's important prior to being able for us to respond to the Forest Service comment period. And finally, the open house to the, again, projected on my part, NOI being issued in mid-April. For the proposed route, that'll be about three months, again, mid-January and mid-April. And if the dates hold for us in Craig County, it'll be one to three days. So the translation I would submit to you is that the citizens of Craig County have been disenfranchised by the actions of MVP, and we've not been afforded due process. This is whether you agree with the pipeline or disagree with it, it doesn't matter. This is just the process that, in fact, in principle, I would argue, there are own documents laid out and what FERC approved. So we need your help. We'd recommend, in the strongest way possible and respectfully, request that Craig County Board of Supervisors, one, send a formal request to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission that they not issue a Notice of Intent to Proceed with an Environmental Impact Study any sooner than such time that would provide the citizens of Craig County to equitable review time following an open house held in Craig County by the MVP team. Second, send a formal request to the National Forest Service that they not close the open public comment period any sooner than one month following an open house held in Craig County by the MVP team. And third, pass a resolution for these and perhaps other reasons in opposition to the MVP project's alternates 110, 110J, and 110. And so again, we thank you on behalf of Preserve Craig and the citizens of the county. Thank you.
That's an overwhelming response for a presentation that you're generously sharing with our board, so we appreciate all that information. There's a lot of information here. Is it possible to ask that you could share your PowerPoint or copy with Clay for future? We would appreciate that. Questions from our board?
Thank you for the opportunity, and we appreciate everyone who's involved. There are hundreds of volunteers now working on this. Thank you.
At this point, we've finished all of the briefings that were scheduled for tonight. I'm looking at the clock, and I see that it's 6:52. It's about 10 minutes to 7:00. I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to take just a 10-minute recess, 10-minute recess to allow folks to use restrooms, stretch their legs. If you were here just for the briefings and you don't feel you need to stay for public comment, it would be perfectly fine for you to scoot out, but we would encourage anyone who would like to stay for the rest of our meeting, certainly to stay. We have the two public hearings, which we don't think will be too lengthy. We have lots of business on the county to get through, and then we certainly have to hear the public. And we would encourage our guests for the briefings to stay to the end to hear the public if that is your desire. We would encourage that. So at this moment, we'll reset for 10 minutes break.
I would like to, it's a pleasure as a board, as Mr. Kay, our emergency management coordinator, to come and kind of give us a perspective on what it would be like if this proposed pipeline did come through our county. What would we be able to have the resources to handle any kind of disruption?
I did send a draft letter to the county administrator about a week ago on reference to this. Without knowing the specific details, I've only been able to see what's in the papers. But it appears to me that this is going to cross directly through four of our fire departments' response areas. I am adamantly opposed to this pipeline because we have no defense against a fire from this pipeline. But it will directly cross four of our department's area, and of course, Newcastle is our backup for everybody. So it affects all five of our fire departments and then our three rescue squads. We have no apparatus in this county equipped to handle a natural gas-type fire. We do have a little bit of foam on a couple, three of our department's trucks, nowhere close to what we would need. Our personal protection equipment that our firefighters have is not up to NFPA standards for a fire of this nature. I heard the $900,000 projected tax base. I'm a little skeptical of that, but if we do get that, it would be my anticipation that the first seven years, we would need that to equip apparatus. A single fire truck is going to be $750,000 to a million dollars equipped with the foam and the stuff we would need for that. I've given some thought to, well, they've got these automatic valves on it. I'm very familiar with pipeline. For many years, I called on Transco that ran from North Carolina through Chatham, Alta Vista, and out Northern Virginia. We don't have the equipment, we don't have the manpower. We cannot just say, well, they're going to shut off the valves and we'll let it burn out. Well, that's what we want to do for a gas fire. Our problem is, we can't wait for equipment to come from Cincinnati or Charleston or Richmond to help us combat that because it's going to burn. Once it starts in Craig County, where the wind blows, it's going to burn a third of our county before we can get equipment and apparatus. Our attempting to fight that propane fire would kind of be like fighting a brush fire with a squirt gun. We have nothing here to do that with. My other concern is that if you go over and you look at these pipelines where they've crossed, and a good one to look at is the one in Perrisburg coming into, that Mr. Dunbar referred to, coming into the Salines Plant, it's right straight up the mountain, nice and clean. I can see that as opening up a path all the way through our county, up the mountains, down the mountains, that's going to be very enticing. Even though it's posted property, it's going to be very enticing to hikers, ATV'ers, motorcyclers. That program of personal property stayoff, it has not worked well for the railroad nor the National Forest Service, so why would we think it would work well for a pipeline? I think it's going to create rescue situations. Again, we have not the equipment nor the trained personnel to go into that area. So, with just those simple things, I have great concern. Mr. Dunbar and I discussed some of this yesterday, and he has asked me, and I intend to do it in the next week or two, to go online. I have access to a lot of the fires and the disasters that happen in the United States. I'm going to try to pull up some incidences of a pipeline of this approximate size and see what the responses were like, what apparatus they used, how much money, to try to get together a better idea of what our needs will be. But I can tell you that I'm sure it's going to be insurpassable for the taxpayer of Craig County to pay for that.
Mr. Kay, can I ask you two from another group that you really didn't mention? From what I've heard tonight, the actual construction of this poses some issues for our county. Can you speak to how, from a public safety standpoint, can we support the process? And I'm looking way down the road. If there's a pipeline being constructed in our county for the employees that are digging and building, the people working all that land, that, what, two years of putting in a pipeline, do we have the capability to protect those people?
It's going to, again, increase, it's going to increase our, you cannot, in my opinion, you cannot put that pipeline through without some accidents.
And the slopes and all that, come out and down the mountain.
Right. It's going to create rescue problems for us that we're going to have to deal with. On a personal note, I was on vacation three weeks ago in Key West, and a waitress was waiting on us. My wife asked her where she was from, and she said she was from Ohio. I said, "Why'd you come to Key West?" And she said, "Because in our community, a pipeline went through, and it wasn't a safe place for my children." And boy, that hit home. Any more questions?
None for me. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
I might just want to comment to my other board members. I'm feeling, as a result of tonight's meeting, some urgency to begin to have dialogue and authorize Clay Goodman to be able to talk with our county attorney and begin to draft some of these responses for some of these deadlines that have been presented to us. I know we've received some information for the first time tonight, but how do you feel about what you've heard in the pipeline in general? We haven't given...
I think we have to respond to the Forest Service as quickly as possible. And we discussed a couple of meetings ago, you know, we have, we have several ways we can oppose the pipeline, but primarily it doesn't, it doesn't coincide with our overall plan for the county. Our long-term...
The conference of plan.
Right. I mean, aside from all the safety aspects, we probably have a half a dozen good reasons to, at least for the public, not support the project.
My thought in response to you, Jesse, but I'm also thinking that we, we need some time here to hold the public hearings, get the public input for and against this whole issue as it's unfolding, all the different aspects related to it.
I'm the one that's talking about, we have to respond to the Forest Service, so, I mean, we have to be one way or the other.
Would you like to make a motion?
Where we stand as a board.
Yes, where do we stand as a board? Would someone like to make a motion to authorize...
I also move, based on the public safety fire possibilities and not, not, not working with our own comprehensive plan, which when it comes to Forest Service, the comprehensive plan and Forest Service are kind of hand in hand for us because they're such a big part of the county, so.
So what I'm hearing is we have a motion on the floor to authorize Clay to begin to draft, gather information to draft, first of all, a response to the Forest Service in relation to the survey, the open, the comment period for the county to officially respond to the...
Right, yes.
And more specifically, if I may, Mr. Spence, just to clarify for me, is that we would, the board would be in opposition to the issuance of the survey permit?
Right. That would be my motion.
That's important.
That's what we always dispute. That's Mr. Spence's motion on the way in, if that's okay?
Yep.
To oppose what I'm calling?
Oppose, based on public safety and opposition of our comprehensive plan.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
If I may continue down this, you know, since it is our time for sharing and lots of things, I, I, if I could be so bold as being the chairperson this evening to make a motion to authorize Clay as well to draft a position statement for the county with our legal counsel, so that we can support some of these future documents that are probably going to be needed, all of the environmental studies that are going to be coming down the road, the other, the other deadlines over and above the Forest Service, the Forest Service public comment period. I'd like to make a motion, ask my colleagues if you would support a motion to support the taxpayer dollars financially in whatever capacity Clay would need to, to use those funds for the, from a legal standpoint, to authorize you, to authorize you, Clay, to...
Well, I, we just, we just need to, we need to draft a statement at this point, right?
Yes, sir.
So, so we really don't need any, other than what we've already had, any legal counsel?
Correct.
Okay. Now, is this something that you could draft and we could approve at the continuance of the meeting on the 26th?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And that would still be in time for the Forest Service comment?
That's understanding because we can't submit it electronically, yes, sir.
Okay.
We would submit it that next day just to fix, just to be safe.
I would support Martha's motion, as we just clarified.
Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
I might make another suggestion for a group, possibly a motion to consider, a community, the development or pursuing a advisory, a community citizens advisory council as we move forward. I think there are enough professionals within our county who have expertise in many of these areas that we're going to need. We've already received some input from one community group. There may be others who would also like to help the county in whatever area of expertise. Sorry, I wonder what you thought about at least beginning a dialogue on creating a citizen council that could meet parallel with our board to, to be able to kind of handle this project that's coming our way among the limits that we're a part-time board. We all have day jobs doing other things, families, properties, farms that we're running, and I think our citizens are really due an awful lot more rolling up our sleeves and meeting these deadlines and writing these letters and filing whatever, providing whatever information that groups like the pipeline, could be something else down the road, but this is not our vocabulary and this is not our, this is, this is not our business. And we need time to do our homework and we need time to gather our experts to be able to provide the information that a pipeline company would need to, to really be able to decide if this is in fact an appropriate place to put a pipeline. So my, my thought was, an advisory council of our citizens would be very helpful to us as a board, to be able to gather some information between meetings. Maybe just your thoughts or your comments on...
Are you talking basically to volunteer basis?
Like a vol, that we could just...
And they would report?
Pull together and they would report to us their findings so that we, we don't miss future deadlines and have some expertise other than the five, five board members.
If someone would, would like to take on that task, they could get with Martha and, yeah, we would be more than glad to have any assistance that anyone could get.
Yeah, I'm sure we'd be happy to give them time every meeting at the reports to address the board.
To help us get the factual information as we navigate this. Okay, Clay, do you need anything from us to help us as the administrator or county?
I'll be, I'll proceed with that and contact appropriate people and so forth, see what we can pull together. One point, if I may ask, there was an issue that was brought up about the fact that the April 2nd deadline for the National Forest Service, is there, would you want me to meet that or do you want to ask for an extension or do you just want to leave on?
I'd be prepared to meet at that, ask for an extension.
Right. We need to be prepared to meet.
Yeah, we need to be prepared.
So would it be appropriate if I said on behalf of the board supervisors of Craig County, they respect the request that the comment period deadline be extended for 30 days?
Yes, yes.
That would be appropriate.
Are there any other comments from the board?
Yeah, this is not associated with the pipeline, but two or three months ago, we had had some discussion in the same part of the meeting about the elimination of the county decal and I wanted to move that we ask Clay to do some research on the, what cost evaluations, what the county would save and basically just to give us an overview of what we could expect in eliminating the decal, not for this year, but starting next year. So I, I so move.
Mr. Dunbar, or Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
This point of clarification, what I'll include in there is also a time schedule. I'll get with the Constitutional Office, see what would be the most, period of time that we could, the quickest we could do it still, because there's a lot of things going on already.
Right.
And so, and we also have to look at the IT side of it and actually some information on that because we have to change our IT.
Well, knowing that next year could be the earliest year.
Yes, sir.
Anything else from board members, if you may?
No.
All right, well with that, I guess we'll move to the next item, which is to hear the public. In light of the hour, as well as the room, it's still quite full, so that makes me think that there are many people who would like to come up to the podium and share their thoughts and we, as a board, welcome that. What I'd like to do is just say a couple of things about the situation. We do want you to come up to the podium, speak right into the microphone because in this room, it's recorded directly from the microphone. It's not bouncing through the walls and, and we need your, your comments to get on record. If you could keep them short, short enough, because many people may want to stand up and speak, you can speak about anything that you need, something you've heard about this evening, but this is a chance for you to bring your concerns to the board. We won't engage in discussion, we won't be debating your points, but it's a chance for you to share anything, question, concern, you agree with something, you don't agree with something, you want to ask the board for something, this is your time to share it. We'll just ask you to be as brief as you can, but take whatever time you need to share your thoughts with us. My colleague is saying three minutes.
Chairman, they also need to provide their name and address.
Yes, so you'll, you'll come up to the podium, state your name, your address, just so we know who, who is speaking to us and I guess at this point, we'll just open it up and whoever would like to come on up, come on up and one behind the other and we'll be happy to hear what you have to say.
My name is Drew Watson, 5461 Craig Valley Drive, Newcastle, Virginia. I have a lot of questions about the pipeline and I'm sure the answers will elicit a lot more questions. For instance, the pumping station, how many kilowatts is a pumping station going to require? And I'll think it'd be a high voltage line, is that on the same right of way or is that going to take another eminent domain and pipeline or the power line coming from another direction? What pressure and velocity and temperature window are you aiming for with this? The line's 42 inches, that's the outside diameter, what is the wall thickness? How often are the emergency stop valves, how are they actuated and are they pneumatic or they electric? And where is all the controls coming from? The controls are the wireless or they along the line and the access? And what are you monitoring and how are you monitoring for safety to the line? My understanding is the line's going to be buried, so what monitoring are you going to use? How deep is it? How long is the construction window from when to when? Now, you have the right of way, I understand that it is an access, you're not buying the land, you're buying the right of way. What does that do? If you cut across somebody's farm, what, can you cross the right of way? Does it cut your farm in two? How do you access it? I would imagine the construction equipment would traverse along the line as it's being built, but the pipe and the other supplies will not. They'll have to come in a periodic thing, so does that tear up additional line, additional land and what's done about that? And then the tax, you mentioned $900,000 tax, is that net tax or is that gross? Because the land that this line goes across is going to lose property values and that's going to be a loss to the county on that. That's just a few of the many questions I have and I'm sure your response will elicit, as I said, a lot more questions from the time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Murphy. Address is 8227 Cumberland Gap Road, Newcastle. As a landowner in the county and one who also has a red line drawn across their land for this pipeline, I want to encourage the board to take quick action on the things that Preserve Craig suggested. And not just with the Forest Service as, I mean, very happy to hear what, what you had to say, Mr. Spence, to, to push along Forest Service issues, but issues also need to be pushed with the FERC. They are the ones who are going to make the ultimate decisions and once they make a decision to move to the NOI for an environmental impact statement, any problems that we have with pre-filing procedures that have or have not been followed, they all disappear as far as the FERC is concerned. So as a landowner and four other landowners that I've talked with, we feel like we are not being treated the way we should according to the procedures that are laid out by FERC. We're not being respected in this process, we have not been given sufficient information and there are even landowners who are being threatened already with eminent domain by the survey company that MVP has employed. Some of the landowners, the very first contact they have heard about this pipeline has been people coming to their door and threatening them with eminent domain. And that is not a respectful way to do this and I don't believe that it follows the FERC guidelines for how this should all be done too. So I would encourage the board to contact the FERC immediately and ask them to hold off on issuing the NOI until all of these problems related to Craig County and the landowners and the way that we've been treated, the information that we don't have yet can all be addressed. But if FERC issues the NOI, we have no recourse. It's going to move forward very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dawn Shepherd. I live in Simmonsville and I just wanted to say to y'all, just please fight this. I do not want this pipeline here. We moved from Franklin County over here because we love this land. We've not even been here a year yet and now we're having our land threatened and it's really disappointing. This is not what this area is about. It's not what the Park Service was about, so please do all you can to fight this. Thank you.
My name's Larry Willis, 273 Midway Place, Newcastle. The pipeline goes through my property, but one of the things I wanted to make the board aware of is that the path, one of the paths, the 110J route, is going to go through the Miller's Cove area and down Trout Creek. If you're standing on Dragon's Tooth, if you're standing on the rock at Dragon's Tooth and looking across the valley at the view from there, the pipeline's going to be going right through that area. The AT is very important to us, the views are very important to us, and that's one of the iconic views that needs to be protected. I can't believe that that's even been proposed. Thank you.
My name is Bill, my name is Bill Wolfe. I live at 4962 Little Mountain Road, Newcastle, Virginia. The pipeline route does not currently, as proposed, go through my property. It does come fairly close and goes through, as proposed, most of my friends, all of my I'm here, first of all, I want to let you know about something that I just learned about in the last 24 hours and it's still unfolding, but it's an example of a process that is inappropriate. And so the idea of contacting the FERC as a county government has become critical. We learned in the last 24 hours that the Mountain Valley Pipeline or its agents submitted requests through misutility to have lines flagged where underground, underground pipe, underground electric and phone or other circuits are along the route, including sites where people have refused access. We believe this is a violation of state law. It's intrusive and the citizens of this county, Craig Baditad Electrico, will have to carry that work out by law. It is being investigated right now and we question the legitimacy of it, but it puts the sheriff in a difficult position. It puts our citizens in a difficult position and I want it during this... And I wanted during this time to at least alert you to it. As Preserve Craig, we are sending out an email to all the landowners that we have access to to let them know that this is occurring and that the people who may be out there spraying have to do this under the law. And they are simply Craig-Bodatot Electric Co-op employees. If anyone enters the land, we want to get photographs and documentation of any other employee other than Craig-Bodatot. But this is just a little tentacle, a little example of what is, what I believe to be an inappropriate process prior to notifying the county of the procedures and having an open house. So, again, contacting the FERC is critical. Lastly, I really applaud your setting up a advisory or a committee. And I want to, on behalf of the fifteen-member steering committee and the six operating committees of Preserve Craig, let you know several things. We, we are retaining legal counsel. We are here to work with you in any way possible and we will certainly like, would like to participate in that, in that committee and do anything to provide you with information. Thank you.
You have a fan.
Good evening. My name is John Dennis. I'm a landowner on Southside Road, Little Oregon. And I wanted to kind of just give a perspective of my story. I received a letter that, one of, I have two parcels, that one of my parcels was subject to survey. I was then contacted, sent an email that, not only that one parcel, but another parcel that I, was also being cut straight through. I didn't receive notification via letter from MVP. In addition, the Dunbar gentleman who lives right beside me, I'm sorry, what's his name? Dunbar, did not receive notification and due process was not conducted. So, I think you guys should make a motion to resist this pipeline. Thank you.
I'm Richard Smith, ten fifty-two Sugar Maple Road, Newcastle. Like a lot of other people, I'm a landowner, farm owner. The pipeline right now does not come through my property, but it does my neighbors', which it can shift. The one thing that, when they talked about the pipeline being, the deadlines and stuff, when they, the first proposed route, and the pipelines that you've built, have you always had just one proposed route or have you had alternates? You had plenty of time to let Craig County or any other county know that you had alternate routes. That should have been done to start with. Because you've never gone anywhere with the exact same route you wanted to go. The farm that I live on, I'm a seven generation. It's one of the century farms in Craig County. My niece has killed children or makes nine generations. I'm related to a lot of people here in the county and farming has been Craig County. The historical part of it, the national forest, everything is going to be damaged. No matter, and it's kind of like Mr. Katie said, whatever, we have not the resources to fight any kind of disaster. And they have had disasters. Yes, they try to make everything top-notch, but this is our first time doing a forty-two inch line. So, I appreciate you all's consideration with what you all are trying to do and everyone else in the county that is helping out in the neighboring counties. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy De Corsi. I don't actually live in Craig County. I live in Foxfire. I'm in Montgomery County, but I run rescue over here and have a lot of friends here. I have, I'm a relative newcomer. I've only lived out here twenty years this winter. So, it, I know a lot of people here who have deep roots here. Foxfire's only been out in Craig County over, you know, it's partly Craig, partly in Montgomery. And we've only been out here, you know, the development's only been out there since the seventies. But we all moved out there because of what this area has to offer. And the, both for the family farms that are going to be decimated and for me personally, I don't know, I haven't heard, I don't know. If it doesn't hit my land, it comes to my next door neighbors. It would decimate Foxfire. And we're just, I hope we can do something as a community. I'm going to contact Montgomery County. They tend to forget that our little neighborhood exists. It happened twenty years ago with the power line. I just hope we can do something to preserve what makes this area so special and the reason I like to come over here so much. So, thank you.
Anyone else with any other thoughts that have been brought up tonight?
Good evening. My name's Dwayne Means. I live on Bethel Charge Road up near Simmonsville. There seems to be a lot of confusion relative to the Mountain Valley Pipeline, where the corridor is and what properties it crosses. I have been contacted for a survey. According to all the information that MVP provides, I am not on the corridor. I've heard multiple folks this evening talking about, it's not on my land, but I think it's on my neighbors. I would like to know when the public meetings occur that MVP shows up with accurate information. Information that actually means something to our citizens. If the board could make that request to MVP, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you.
My name is Janice Bostick. I don't actually live in Newcastle, but my roots are here. My mother is a Shire's, my father was a Bostick and I spent a lot of my childhood here. And I've recently returned to this area and, because the mountains have called me. And I, I'm also a member of the Roanoke Appalachian Trail Club. And I think there's a lot of the members in that club and the people who love the mountains and hike the mountains that appreciate your initial indications that you're going to oppose. And I hope you do everything you can to oppose this. Thank you.
Just want to make sure to give everyone who has a thought a chance to share. Okay, well, it appears that everyone who wanted to make a comment was able. I would actually encourage anyone who has a thought when they go home tonight, tomorrow, that our county administrator's office is always open. Suzanne, I mean, Mr. Goodman and Kathy are in the office. That team of three are in the office every day. If you have any questions, thoughts, concerns that you either put in a phone call or in writing, share us your concerns or call each of your, the board members directly. We'd all be very happy, we work right at our houses and you know that. And we would be very happy to add any other concerns to the record so that we get the answers to the questions that you all have. Monday through Thursday, oh, I'm sorry, tomorrow, yes, the office is closed. The administrator's office is closed tomorrow. So, it's Monday, yes. Okay, with the close of the public, hearing the public during our meeting, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting to, we're going to adjourn the meeting until March twenty-sixth. We'll have a continuation at five thirty. Thank you very much for coming out.